And go through the preliminary stuff and get that done with. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so as a preliminary matter, this is Harry Kubatz, Chair at Wunderberg Public Library Board of Trustees. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. So we're gonna start in order. Laura Bossum. Bob Conroy.
Here.
Dick Mayo. Hello. Kate McCarron.
Yeah.
Donna Saya.
Hi, I'm here.
Maya Winthrop. So I think she will be joining. Your Hammond.
I'm here.
Michael Ray Jeffries.
I'm here.
Okay, so we'll circle back to Maya. I'm sure that she will be here. So good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please advise that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Wunderberg Public Access Channel in this meeting of the Wunderberg Public Library. Board of Trustees is being conducted remotely. The town of Wunderberg, in response to COVID-19, is currently following the guidance from the Wunderberg Board of Health Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. Some town facilities are currently closed to the public and/or being operated under restrictions. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, all meetings are being conducted remotely. Order which will find posted on the town website, access through the manager's webpage of the public body meetings purely remotely. So long as reasonable public access is supported, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such partition participations required by law. This meeting will feature public comment for this meeting of the Wunderberg Public Library Board of Trustees. Is being convened by Zoom as posted on the town website identifying how the public may join. Please note this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folk may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate reading minutes. The chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. The chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name called further. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes for any response. Please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to communicate with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Right in the public comment after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, the chair will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comment. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Did we get Maya on the call? Okay. I still think that she is going to join, but I think we. Move along.
She just. Maya is 617, then that's, that's her. There she is in her car, so she must be 617.
She's driving, okay.
Yeah.
Hey Maya. Can, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I can. Thank you. Sorry about.
No, no problem. We anticipated you being here. Hey, I just want to cover really quickly with everybody that. I know that one of our members went to town hall to get sworn in today newly elected. And town clerk was not in. That person contacted me. I contacted the town manager's office. Got told verbally and then in a written, an email that I received, which I distributed to you. The ruling of town council is if it is a member being reelected, swearing it has not taken place yet. It's considered that the person's operating under previous term and can participate. And should get to town hall first hearing as soon as possible. So you all have copies of that, so I'm not sure everyone whom that may apply. But everybody that is on this, participating in this meeting is therefore entitled to participate. Okay, I'm glad everyone got that email.
Yes.
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 Okay. You're welcome. So. Is there any public comment? So the, going on the, to the next item of the agenda is the first item is the board reorg of officers and subcommittee members. I did send to everybody the current Board of Trustees, which is, well, it was the current at the time and it remains the current. Together with the position that everyone holds as well as subcommittee assignments. So the first thing that we should do as part of this meeting is we should determine who will be Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary going forward for our next term. And at that point, the chair should pick up and continue this meeting. So. It's open for nomination suggestions, comments.
Good evening all. I don't know if this is, is in order or not, or if there are other, other considerations that people want to put forth. But at this time, having looked at our current slate and having considered how this particular group works. Albeit, I do take issue with the, the fact that there should be some transition. But I would like to suggest one possibility is simply go on with the board as constituted.
Jake, are you, are you making a motion to just accept the whole thing at once?
Or do you want conversation?
Or if, I'll make that motion, then obviously then it can be discussed. So I'll make that motion and if there's a, they can come up with.
This is Kate. I'll second the motion and I love the motion. As long as you are all willing, you've been fantastic. And I did talk to Bob and I said, I won't put you in this position, but boy, I'd love it if you'd stay. And you know, Jake, you and Harry are interchangeable and just are fabulous team. So I love that motion if you're all willing.
I'm, I'm happy to continue and as secretary also.
Thank you, Bob.
Um, just, I'm gonna give my comment on this. And that is, I'm, I'm happy to continue, but I do want to make it clear that I think that anybody else on this call could just as easily be in this position. I, I think that it's sort of at this point, a, a, a sort of an organizer and facilitator thing. I, I think that everybody on this board is valued and can do it. So I, if, if you wish, I will continue, but I certainly have no objection if somebody else would like to do it. And is there any other comment on this?
No. No, everybody loves it.
So I, I guess at this point, we haven't, we already had a second on the motion, right?
Yeah.
So I guess we vote on the motion. The, the motion is to keep Harry Kubatz as chair, Dick Mayo as vice chair, Robert Conroy as secretary. All in, oh, sorry, we need to do a roll call. I'm sorry. So Laura.
Hi.
Bob.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Maya.
Yes.
Harry. Yes, so unanimous. We, we continue without, with those positions. Um, thank you guys for your support and endorsement, but I seriously mean what I said. We're all equals on this board. So in terms of subcommittees, we, we have the listing in front of us. The personnel subcommittee is currently Harry, Kate, and Maya. Any, any discussion on this?
Okay, Dick here. Is, is there, is there anyone looking at that list that wants to move from a committee there on to another committee?
No.
No.
Okay. So I guess, can we please have a motion to keep the subcommittee assignments as they are?
I have one comment.
Yes, please.
I know this is only two people on the budget subcommittee. I don't know when you meet or anything like that, but I would be interested in that.
Awesome.
To learn. How often do they meet? When's the last time they met?
Usually the, the budget subcommittee's main task is to review with the director the library budget requests, which is usually we, we get that done in one meeting. Certainly, if, if generally, it's a very short meeting as well. But you know, especially if you're interested in learning more, you know, we can spend more time on things like that. But it's, it's part of the, we receive the town manager's target budget from her. And then we, we as a, that subcommittee kind of goes over what requests above that target we would like to make. So very important. And very, very much connected to library operations.
Um, so Laura, I, I've added your name to my list. We'll, we'll take a vote on, on the overall list, but thank you for offering that. Are there any other changes, suggestion, comments to the subcommittee assignments? So may I please have a motion to keep the subcommittee assignments as they currently are with the addition of Laura to the budget subcommittee?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call again. So Laura.
Yes.
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 Kate.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Maya.
Yes.
And Harry. Yes, so unanimously approved. So great. Thank you, everyone. We go on to the next item, which is the approval in the minutes of April 15th. And I know that Bob distributed these minutes, I think yesterday or something like that. So why don't you guys take a look and I don't know, let us, let us know when you're done.
Just, um, this is Kate. Virtual tour of the Emily Dickinson Museum. Where's, what am I looking under? I think Dickinson is K-I-N-S-O-N.
Yes, you're right. It is.
Oh yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Um, Bob, just in my being a nerd, the third bullet point from the bottom on director's report. I would just like to suggest that we make it 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And later in that same point, it'd be from 2 p.m. to 7:45 p.m.
2 p.m. to 7:45 p.m. Okay.
That. That, whether it's 10 to 2, did you see that?
Yes. Yep, I got that.
Okay, thank you. These are great, great minutes, Bob. Thank you.
Yes, as always.
Any other comments?
One, under trustee handbook discussion, first bullet point, chapter to the chapter. Chapter C should be capitalized.
Chapter should be capitalized?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the next bullet point. Chapter two, again. Capitalizations.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, we've got two as a word and two as a number.
And.
Make it consistent.
Yeah, that would.
Yeah, sure. I'll change the number to T W L.
Are there any other comments on this? If, if no other comments, can we have please have a motion to accept the meeting, sorry, the minutes of the meeting of April 15th as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we're in the roll call, please. So Laura.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Bob.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Maya.
Yes.
Harry. Yes, unanimously approved. Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you.
So big boss, you're on.
Wow, already making great time. All right, I'm gonna share my screen here with you guys so you can. Sorry. There. There. Right, so surprisingly, we're in the 11th month of the fiscal year. Very close to the end. And we are still 71% expended, so. Got some, got some big things coming up in the last little over a month here. We will be paying our strategic planning consultant. We'll be paying for a bunch of renewals. There, there are actually a bunch of bills submitted for payment that are not on this report, so. Library materials is one area. Electricity and heating is another place where they, those bills haven't been signed off in a warrant yet, so they're not showing up as expended. But we'll get there. Programs will also, we've got, I think eight programs we'll be paying for that have either happened in May or are going to happen in June. So we'll get there. Any questions about FY21 for me? We will certainly, if we underspend anywhere, we'll try to try to transfer those to places where we can use it. Been talking with Dan in IT about some technology pieces, if there, if there's some some underspent funds for things that can go towards upgrading infrastructure or you know, service point technology. That's, that would be kind of the one of the first areas that we would target if there, if there was some extra money.
I have a question for you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Michael Ray.
The budget, the budget that you're presenting as far as expended expenditures go, that's accurate as of what date?
It's accurate in Munis as of. I think it was the 15th. I ran the report. May 15th.
Okay. And so you mentioned about the, that you have some bills that are outstanding. Do the, I, I assume then that the accruals don't show up when you run the report?
Yeah, so when I submit vouchers, they won't get into me. I run, so I run the report from Munis. Which is, you know, the municipal financial software. And I submit a paper voucher to the finance department. I sign off on that as representative of the board. And then that goes into a warrant as it's prepared by either Lynn or Karen. And then the next warrant that the Board of Selectmen or the select board sign off on. Generally, the bills go into that, so it can be on, based on the current schedule of warrants. It could be up to really two weeks theoretically before vouchers that I've submitted get signed off on and which I believe that's when they start showing up, although I could be wrong on that. In the, in Munis and then would be showing up in the report that I run to, to build this report for the, the board.
My last question is, do you, do you expect to fully exhaust your budget lines for library material? And for programs before the end of the fiscal year?
Yes. Absolutely. So we'll make, we're gonna make a payment for eBooks. We have, we'll have to make, you know, pretty significant payments for actual physical materials, books and DVDs that, that are being ordered. Our programs will, will expend virtually all of that, you know, program money. Couple dollars, I think, is, is the difference. And yeah. We will, we will definitely expend those, those lines. And the, in the other, the other thing that's, that was in the stack, last stack of bills that I submitted were things like library insight, which is our calendar program. So that license renewal is up. Things like standing order plan for large print. So some pretty big bills there. Database renewals as well. So foundation center and forget the other one. So we're talking, we're talking, you know, five digits worth of, worth of bills there in that, in those renewals.
And can I?
Those databases are like four, 4,000, 5,000. Standing order plans for the year typically three to 5,000 each.
You are, I don't know if you heard, but somebody, maybe Donna had a question or Laura, I'm not sure.
Sure.
I have a question. This is Kate.
Kate.
You're, so just looking at, so in terms of the mileage, that, that you said you can just roll it into another item. For example, if you needed more materials.
Yep. So those would be budget transfers that would need to be approved by the town manager. Typically, we've not had an issue with that and obviously we haven't needed to pay for any mileage this year.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. FY22 budget was approved at annual town meeting, May 1st. And I've got the amounts here. Those 439,551, 5, 541 dollars. Increases on, on book service. CW Mars Network. The small office supplies and library materials lines all have decent size increases. Library staff salary is a little lower. Because we have new staff members who are being paid less than the more experienced staff members. The other big decrease is contracted services, which included a on-time increase for our strategic planning consultant. And just about everything else is the same, so positive for the library, I would say.
Amy, you're very good job of managing budget.
Thank you. We'll keep working on it. Staff news. We, we will be posting the vacant position. We're currently waiting. Last I knew, to hear back from town council about adding or from the, yeah, from town council about adding a detail in the job description. Since it's a union position. Whether that can happen. About education and work experience requirements, the way that this position's description was worded. Makes it seem it's worded that two years of experience plus the preferred master's degree is, is what we're looking for. And that is, really, it's more of a, it should be a combination of either master's degree, two years of work experience, or a combination of the two. So that need, that's, there's a change that, that should probably be made and, and that's what's holding us up at this moment. But it should be posted very soon. We do need to post it internally first because of the union, because it is a union position. And, and then after that internal posting, then it would be posted on MBLC and other places. We'll be doing staff performance reviews over the next month and a half, meeting with each staff person. Repeat to review performance and go over goals for the future. They'll complete a self-assessment before we meet and then we'll discuss. And they will include a quantif, a list of quantifiable goals for FY22. So that with the goal of going over those regularly, whether it's quarterly or, or twice, you know, halfway through the year. And giving us a way to check in partway through the year on, on what we're trying to accomplish. I think that that will dovetail nicely with the strategic plan and the action plan. Yeah, obviously, end of the fiscal year, so we've been, I've been doing a lot of work on finishing up purchase requisitions and for, for programs and, and things as we've kind of discussed already. Creative Bug, Canopy, World Book Online and others. The survey for the strategic plan also is. The survey for the strategic plan also is really fantastic. The response was, was great. More than three hundred and fifty people. Filled out a survey, which is more than three times what we normally see for a survey. You know, it seem, may seem like a small number of residents from Lunenburg, but your survey responses are generally. Really low in the single digit percentages, so. For us, it, it seems really positive and got some great answers back, so. Another good, another program.
You will, just before we roll up the sentence in your report, that ends, the last sentence you want to make addition, there you go.
Thank you.
I have a question as well, Muir.
Yes, sir.
For this, for your staffing, are, are the library staff part of the clerical union?
He, some of the staff members are. The, the union, the, the union that we are part of is the clerical union. Yeah, so we have. We have our, we have adult services, teen, the YA services, children's services. And the vacant position are for staff librarian positions who are part of the clerical union. Yes. Staff people are, are part of the SAP.
The Select Board is currently in negotiations with the Clerical Union. Has Heather provided you with an update on where we are at?
Uh, no, we, we had a department head meeting Tuesday. She didn't mention anything there, so.
Okay, I would, I encourage you just to have a conversation with her, just to get an update.
Okay.
On where those conversations are going.
I will. I'll check in with her.
Now might be a good time to change that description.
Okay. Uh, I'll get on that. Give her a call. Thank you.
Muir.
Yes.
Have a question.
Laura, yeah.
If people ask about the survey, should we still encourage them to respond?
Uh, I have left it so that, that responses can continue to come in, yes. So, you know, I don't think it would hurt anything. For people to fill it out. It will fill out and kind of expand, you know, the, yeah, certainly, please do. It might not go into the strategic plan, but it will still be helpful. I'm not gonna shut it up and, and not look at it. I'll, I'll keep checking it in and I do get a message when other people additional responses come in, so I can check. Thanks for asking. Programs, really good attendance at our teen chess program. I was amazed, sixteen people showed up. Susan said it was really well organized and, and something we likely will come back to maybe late fall and, or winter time. Debbie's Children's Garden Raised Bed looks fantastic in front of the library. Robin, Anizia and, and Brian, Debbie's husband, are both. Thanks to them, they, they helped out a lot. Debbie did a, a huge amount of extra work, working on that. And the town's DPW as well, helping to, to mulch, not just around the, the new raised bed, but also. Doing a great job. Delivering mulch and, and keeping the grounds of the library up. I don't know if you guys have swung, swung by the library lately, but it looks as beautiful as it has in, in a while. I think partially because the DPW crew is, is doing some of that work. While we're waiting for the new landscape contractor to begin July first.
Muir.
Yes, Dick.
We just, I, I've had some passing interactions by email with the new director, Rob Oliver. And it might be good, you know, as a representative of the board to send him a little note. Just making sure that he understands that we as a board appreciate that. I have found him. In the times over the winter and regarding some road issues, that whenever I contacted him, he's, he's very, very responsive. And, you know, certainly that's a, that, that's a department that we want to be on the good side of, but. Even met him personally, but he does really seem to be. A good fit.
Yeah, I've been very impressed so far with my interactions. He, he was present at our. Moving company pre-bid conference a week or two ago and, and had a long chat with him and, and. You know, I had the same impressions, very helpful, very open, very willing to discuss things, so I will. Make sure I send him a note expressing that on behalf of the board.
Excellent.
Yeah, we're really looking forward to summer reading kicking off. Our program on June twenty fourth is Flying High Dogs. I think I've mentioned it to you guys. There's a dog troop that comes in and does tricks and whatnot. We'll have a Kona ice truck there, present parked in the library lot. And we will have, it sounds like the Lions Club is very interested in serving food as well. So it'd be quite, quite the evening to kick off summer reading for both the library. And I believe it's gonna function as a kickoff for the summer program for the Parks and Rec Department, so we've been working with. Kayla over there, even though she's about to go on maternity leave, I heard. So we're looking forward to that. And the whole summer reading program should be fantastic and it'll be good to have people around the library and, and. Coming in to get books for reading. Yeah, and. So building and maintenance, the new cleaning crew is, is doing really well. We'll continue to work with them and, and make sure we get everything done. Carpet project is big news as well, and it will impact operations, obviously. The installer will be, needs to be working between June tenth and twenty ninth, and then the moving company. Whichever companies are, I think, I believe it's Liberty has been selected as installer. I don't know if we've made a selection on the moving company, but that moving company will work around the installer to move the collection and furniture and. Pretty much everything that's on the carpeted area out of the way and then back and replace it. So this will be, this will be quite a project. The library is going to have to close during this installation, this renovation. And so that, that's. As, as, as we could expect. But hopefully it won't be the full tenth to twenty ninth that will be closed.
Muir.
Kate. Yeah.
Oh, it's Bob.
Yeah, Bob.
Will curbside pickup be available when that, that work is going on?
Yeah, unfortunately. Curbside will not be available. We're gonna have to, because, because of the arrangement of the carpets. All of the collections get packed up, so the collections will be in storage. We're gonna have to suspend deliveries. And staff will not be able to be in the building itself, as there's, I mean, I'm, I'm sure we could go in. But so much of the building is, is the carpeted area, so it'll be a work area, so we're gonna have to close the book drops as well. Cause there won't be a way to really unload them, so they could get pretty full. So we are sending out a newsletter message about this to people. We'll have signage, we'll have information on the website. Obviously, it's coming up pretty quick here, but. We are gonna suggest a few things to people as well for that, that time period, about to come in before we close to get books for while we are closed. As a hold location, Lunenburg, we will be able to suspend that option, make it inactive. So people can't select Lunenburg as a place to pick up during those closed dates when we know exactly when they will be. But we'll, you know, certainly there are some close by libraries that, that would appreciate visits from Lunenburg people. And would be happy to, to be places to pick items up if they come in during that period.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Here.
Yeah, I know Kate had a question. I can't tell if that's Kate.
Okay, yeah, it was, but you answered, you answered part of it, which was the other locations, but I was curious. When you said something about it may not take the full ten to twenty ninth, and with the summer kickoff, June twenty fourth, is there any. Way you can help to manipulate so that you could actually have it done by the twenty fourth? Is there any pressure you can put on anybody, I guess?
Yeah, I, the way that we, so the way that we've planned summer reading, we had, we were, we were doing, doing, you know, scheduling for it. Way back when we had no idea what was gonna be happening, so we, you know, we planned to not be using the building basically, which is convenient for this closure. So the, this kickoff program will, will be outside of the library, so we can have it, have it go on. Whether or not the, the project with the carpet is continuing at that point.
Well, at least you can advertise it big time, so.
Right, TCP, TCP, I've, I've reached out to John Londa and the TCP building should be available. For, for restroom facilities for that. For that night, and if, if it needs to be after that, there are a couple of programs, like the twenty eighth and the thirtieth, I think. So if we need them at that point too, one of those programs is on the patio. We've got Button Week, which likely will happen while it's, the, the project is still, the work is still ongoing. And that, we're, we're setting up on the, the front walkway. Probably in front of the children's wing, so it'll be out of the way of the workers, but also easily accessed. So people can drop off their registrations and pick, and pick up whatever buttons they earn. Basically, things that we've planned for summer reading can go on as scheduled. Despite staff not being in the building, so it's, it's kind of a weird, weird thing, but it, it looks like it will work out pretty well. Maya?
It, it was. I didn't mean to interrupt. Kate, were you done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, so is there, do you have the ability to have? To check out books when you're not in the actual building, meaning like if you had. Could you box up some children's books to bring to the kickoff and that people could check out somehow? Like during the event, obviously it would be a limited collection, but it would be something.
That's an interesting idea. I will. I'll investigate that. I think there might be. Wifi, we probably could set up. Close enough to the building to get wifi. And so a laptop with a scanner should not be. Should be very possible. We think, you know, book truck worth of books might be, might be something we could do pretty easily, yeah.
Yeah, it just. I just figure, you know, with these guys, it's the instant gratification these days, right? So if they sign up and they can't get a book out, they're gonna be like, wait a minute. Whereas, why am I doing it, you know?
Absolutely, I think that's, I think that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Sure.
We'll see what we can do.
Muir?
Yes.
Hi, um, I was wondering. I, unless I've missed something, was it possible to attend this carpet during the COVID shutdown?
The timing. The timing was strange. We, I think we've kind of gotten to it as quickly as we can. There are several capital projects that are kind of getting squeezed in here at the end of the fiscal year. You know, some of that has to do with our particular project not being on. The list of projects initially for FY twenty one. It, it was kind of like a back and forth thing where during the planning process before the pandemic, it was on the, on the list of projects. Then that was one of the ones that got taken off and, and put on for approval at the special town meeting in the fall. And so we didn't, it wasn't approved until November. And we, so we got a late start. But there's not, you know, there's. It's a, it's also a kind of a team project. It's, the funding comes through to DPW as a, you know, capital funding. So there's some involvement on their part. The town manager's office, procurement office is the one who writes up things like the request for bids. Obviously, there's input from the library and Kit and I have done a lot of research and we did a lot of work, you know. Before we started on, on the, on the, the project this year, getting estimates and, and, and planning. You know, and. I can't, I can't see how, how we could have done it much sooner, knowing that we're not the only, you know, project that's being worked on. You know, things kind of get prioritized and, you know, because a lot of the work is happening, not in the, our, not in our library. You know, not, not by our staff. We work as a team, so. It is a little frustrating, just, especially since we're, we're also kind of ready to open up now.
Yeah, that's the disappointment is, is opening it up, up and then immediately closing, you know, like, uh, less than a month later.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's tough, especially with school ending.
I know. Yeah, I agree. It's a little, you know, there's, I, I feel a little frustration, but I think it, it's, it's gonna be beneficial to get this done. And it, it's gonna be. You know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good thing, and when we are done with that project, we'll basically be back to normal operating hours, so it'll be kind of icing on the cake there. We'll be able to open with, 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 you know, really nice carpet, carpet tiles, so.
Muir, is there any way that, um, to kind of take the sting off, you know, kind of what Donna's saying is, like, could we? Could you do like a running, I, you know, kind of a social media update on the project and like post pictures? And I don't know if we have Instagram, just to make it look like, like an exciting change, so that people who are actively involved in the library. And would find this frustrating would at least have some kind of like. I don't know, they would feel like they have some sort of part in it? I don't, I don't know if that's something you can do or not.
I don't know, because it is a work area. When that work is going on, I'm not sure. I, I'll look into it. I think it's a, I think it's a nice idea if we could, if we could do it. I, I can, I can see what I can do.
Even like a, a picture texted to you on a cell phone at the end of the day from some, somebody, you know, just something.
Yeah, even, even on the library's website, just have an update page that just says. And you could do it with your own cell phone. Just take a picture of the, of the books getting boxed up of them starting the floor. So that they can see progress.
Yeah, I think it would be pretty cool. I, I agree.
It would be really cool, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be something that would be onerous. It wouldn't be a, a big project. It would just be. You know, here's what happened today, or here's what happened, you know, every.
I think that trans, transformation is gonna be incredible.
Right. You're one.
Yeah.
I have one more comment on that same vein.
Yeah.
This is Kate. A lot of it comes down to information always. Do people know what's going on? Do they understand what's going on? So if you do have any kind of surplus money, like even some kind of a big banner or something. So that anybody driving by the library that heard it was opened and then comes and then it isn't opened, there's some really quick way, some exciting way to recognize what's happening. Because I think that is sometimes what causes people to have a, a negative reaction, is they just didn't know. They didn't realize. And it, it is a really good thing. The timing's lousy, but the process will be great. So I think that's just, I don't know, my two cents.
Okay, thanks. All right, so I'm gonna move on a little.
No, I'm sorry, one more.
Yeah, sure.
One more question.
Sure.
Is, I, I, I feel like we all feel a little bit blindsided on this timing. But maybe, maybe, I, I'm just, I'm curious, did we know about this timing before and never react to it?
The, we have known the timing since the request for bids went out. And I don't remember the exact timing on that.
Okay. Cause I, I, I hear everyone's comments and I totally. I, I agree with them, I, I, but I feel that we were maybe. I, I agree with them. I, I, but I feel that we were maybe a little bit asleep at the wheel, although I don't know what we could have done about it. And I don't know that we actually knew the, the timing of COVID restrictions lifting either. And they could have been sooner or later and, but I think, I think it is sort of a little bit of a convergence of unfortunate timing.
It is, yeah, a little bit of a convergence for sure. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's not too much that I'm aware that we could do about, could have done coming down, you know, we're, you know, the, the architect was, was doing a lot of, the architect that works with, you know, the town. Does, was doing a lot of, of help on preparing the request for bids. And, and so, you know, another party that I didn't mention earlier that, that's involved in this and you know, the sheer number of projects that, that are, that are going on. There's only, we, we certainly, it feels like a huge, huge priority for us, but it's, it's one of many for, for a lot of the other people involved in working on it. Yeah, and you know, obviously it's something we gotta you kind of have a limited time to work in, so we're, we're right up against the end of the fiscal year, so there's that too, so.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, I'm done.
Sorry. Um, is the, the big meeting room carpeted?
It's not.
We, it's not?
No.
Could you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you set up a checkout station in there and at least people who get, um, books they order through CW Mars and stuff? And they could use that side door?
That space is going to be
Storage.
Storage for the collection, so that the collection doesn't get stored in a trailer outside.
Okay.
It's, you know, warm time of year, but there's still temperature fluctuation, which is, you know, for those types of materials, the, the change in temperature is, is what uh, over a short period is what's most, kind of most, um, most threatening. Um, so I don't, and, and will also be kind of a staging area for the move too, so I don't think there would be a way to do that unfortunately. It's a nice idea.
Hey, you're gonna ask one more question, corollary to that. How about, how about the staff room? Could that be used, uh, and people check out things through that door?
The staff, so the staff work area is carpeted. So then that.
Kitchen area.
The kitchen room is not. There's not a lot of space there to work with collections and, and deliveries.
Okay, maybe. May, I, I'd like to suggest, you're that if, if you come up with any great ideas that enable us to be able to, uh, continue use, uh, an alternative curbside or whatever it may be.
Okay.
I think it would be uh, something that would be beneficial to the community and sort of goodwill.
Sure.
But you, you, as always, you do what you think is the best for your staff and as well as the community.
Okay. I'll put my brain to work.
I wonder if there's, sorry, this is Maya. I wonder if there's a way that partial, I mean, I had two ideas come to mind. I, these may just be way too much work for such short notice, but one would be, you know, utilizing some area, some unused town area room somewhere. Where we could have a limited collection set up. And the other would be as a sign of goodwill, maybe having some extended hours the week before and the week after. Or, you know, like that couple of days before and then a couple of days after. I don't know, those were just two ideas that came to mind. Am I muted?
No, we can hear you. I can, I'll, I'll look into that stuff. We'll see, we'll see. Setting, yeah. Yeah, I'll see what, I'll see what I can do.
Those are probably a lot of extra work.
You know, part, part of, part of the issue that I see is, you know, we've got eighty thousand plus books. So, you know, selection is you know, selection of that seems positive. To have something available. But the, the amount of, I'll, I'll see what I can do. Yeah, I'll, I'll see. Let me, let me look into it. And I, I will let you guys know.
You, you, you certainly have enough ideas to work with, you're.
Definitely a lot of good ideas. Thank you, guys.
It, it, it is one of those things where convergence of, of things, it, uh, seems like a long time, but it is. I, I like the idea maybe of, you know, extended hours before and after. Could, could simply help, but also just explaining that if there's some way, you know, you just, we didn't have any real control over this. Uh, it has to happen when it has to happen, especially with the fiscal year, so. Good, uh, good, good job getting it to this point.
Yeah, well, hopefully we'll carry it to the finish line. And we'll certainly be happy when we're on the other side. I do, you know, I do think, um, you know, the hours would be, would be great. My, I think, and I, I guess what, part of what I'm, what I'd be curious to hear from you guys. If you know, um, going back to basically normal, normal operating hours for the next couple of weeks until we close. And then having to be closed, whether that would be a positive, or would that, do you think, add to the frustration people feel? What, what are your thoughts?
Thought, I think it's a positive. I really do. I, because I think even now, the people that I know are changed. And even if you are now opened responding to the new parameters by Baker, I'm curious how busy you're gonna be for a while. I, I just know a lot of the people that I talk to, they just operate differently. So it'll be curious. I, I mean, I know when I worked there, there were quiet times and there were crazy busy times, sort of like a restaurant. I'm just wondering now, as everybody's just timidly getting involved with things, how will it really be for a long time? And doing it, I, I would applaud you for doing it because I think people are ready for it and are changed. And it is another way of meeting needs of the community, and it's another really good way to get the information out. So anybody who comes in just sees this big thing, this is what's coming, you know, bad timing, but a great, great result. You know, you can make it really be much more known. Person, that, that would be just my feeling.
Good, good idea.
Yeah, I agree. This is Donna. Um, I agree. I think we should be open as much as possible because it's an important, um, it, it's important to our community to, to, to start exploring that access again. And I remember how it felt when I walked in there that first day, uh, right after it opened up again. And it just, I mean, yeah, I've changed too. And I'm not doing things the same way I used to. I'm not going places the same way I used to. I'm reading more on my e-reader than I ever did before and getting, downloading them from the library. But also, um, just because this is coming up in such a short time, it's a possibility to Xerox some explanations, put them in every book that goes out the door when you hand it back to a customer to remind them, this is coming up, these are the dates, this is what we're doing for you before then. And please continue to contact us online or, you know, just make it as, put, do a nice graphic, make it as pleasant for that customer and informative. Because I don't want to be, I don't want to have to get out of my car, go up to the door and read a little tiny sign that says, oh, we're closed for the, most of the month, June, after we just reopened. I mean, that's, I would not feel good about that.
Right.
As a, as a customer of the library.
Sure. Harry?
So this may be your stupid question of the night. But in, in New York City right now, um, there are all these pop-up coded, um, vaccination centers, like Penn Station, Grand Central, and Amazon bookstore. And people are doing things like getting free metro cards for getting vaccinated and they're getting donuts and Starbucks coffee and all sorts of silly, um, incentives to get people to get vaccinated. Is this happening in Massachusetts? And is it even something that we would want to consider to be able to offer vaccinations at the library?
Cool idea. I don't know if it's happening anywhere else. I doubt it. I think I probably would have heard. Seems like something that, that would be shared as news in, with our, at, at least on our listeners. It's a neat idea. We certainly do the flu clinic sometimes. This Pat, you know, during the pandemic, we didn't, we didn't do it at the li, at the library um, because of spacing concerns. We're expecting kind of big turnout on that one, but, um, Michael Ray has his hand raised. I will yield to him if, if he has something to add.
Yeah, so we, uh, where we're at with the distribution of the vaccines, the current guidance from the state is there are some regional clinics that are, um, available, you know, that kind of like, you know, there was one recently at the mall at Whitney Field. Uh, there was one day where the Johnson and Johnson vaccine was available. The, the, right now, the problem is not so much access to the vaccine anymore. Uh, there's a lot of access. It's, there are, we seem to not be able to overcome the hurdle of, uh, getting everyone to sign up. So, you know, a lot of, um, if you want to get a vaccine tomorrow, you can go to VaxFinder and sign up to get a vaccine tomorrow. I mean, there are a lot of, now there's a steadily increasing amount of slots that are available with limited times that, that people have to wait. I don't know if it would be really beneficial to look into getting the library to be a clinic as much as maybe using the library as a, as a way to spread the word on the importance of getting vaccinated.
Absolutely.
Or, or helping people sign up.
Yep. We, yeah. Yep, we kind of, we had, we'd, um, we had gone back and forth on, um, Martha actually, uh, offered to be the person to do it, uh, Martha Moore. And we were kind of gone back and forth about offering something for, uh, for people to, with help to sign up earlier in the spring and, um, having a Zoom program or, but we, at that point, we also thought the people that would most likely need the help getting through the signup process might not be fully comfortable on Zoom either, so, um, offering that help maybe, maybe is a good, good thing. For now.
The senior center, uh, does offer assistance to seniors who are interested in, in finding a location and getting signed up.
Yeah. Cool. Thank you, Michael Ray. Thanks for all the comments, guys. Appreciate it. As I mentioned, I'm gonna get back to technology updates, I guess. We are planning to replace a couple of the, uh, computers, um, with, with some of our funding. And a few other possibilities. Currently reopening, we are offering browsing Monday through Thursday and Saturday, ten to two, and curbside pickups, two to seven forty-five. I think. Based on suggestions tonight, uh, we will I think open up to what used to be our normal hours, um, for browsing, uh, which is Monday through Thursday, ten to eight, Saturday, ten to two. Um, and, you know, the number of curbside appointments, uh, in the afternoon has kind of gone down lately, so, you know, I think we're at a volume where we had to offer both simultaneously, so I think that 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 will be, that'd be the direction we'll go. And so for our next meeting will actually be after June fifteenth, which is the lifting of the state of emergency. So our next meeting will be in person. That will also be when the library is closed. Uh, so it'll probably actually be up in the Ritter Building. So I'm working on details, uh, with Adam, Bernie. And so he's gonna give me a key and, and, and we'll be meeting up there in the basement of the Ritter, if that sounds good to you guys.
That's like, that's like, that's like a full circle.
Yeah.
I think that will go back to it, to work down in the, down in the cellar.
Like going home.
Harry?
I just wanna, uh, circle back to the bigger boss here of Michael Ray, and is that, Michael Ray, is that consistent with your understanding?
Yes, um, as of the twenty ninth of this month, uh, all statewide, uh, all areas are permitted to go back to one hundred percent capacity. Uh, town buildings are already open. Back at regular business hours, uh, to the public, so. When, and the select board will be starting, um, the first in-person meeting will be June fifteenth. So the town manager did, normally when the CDC gives guidance, you know, it takes a couple of days for the state to update theirs and a couple more days for uh, us to be able to update ours. So, uh, Heather stated that she needs a couple of weeks to have good guidance for how to have meetings back in the buildings. She's asking for, for us to wait until the fifteenth roughly of, uh, of June to be able to do that. So any, anytime after that, uh, won't be a problem.
I don't know that we're gonna know how to have a meeting in face-to-face any longer.
Hey, I'll make all your favorite cookies.
Oh, that's just what I was gonna ask.
Within reason.
Cookies now. Celebration. Champagne and cookies.
Yeah.
So that's the end of my report. Unless you have questions for me.
Wanna start again on it, Mira?
Shall we go over it again?
I was really enjoying the tour of Maya's life over there.
I missed it. I, oh my gosh, I, seriously, I'm so sorry. It was one of those days. From dance to car to soccer to home, oh my gosh.
That is true dedication. When members attend via Zoom as they zoom. Two thumbs up, Maya.
It's okay, we, we can all remember the time that I was shoveling my mother's driveway while on the subcommittee meeting, so we're good.
Wow, that's great.
So, uh, next subject is, and the update?
Yes. Um, so we haven't met. We had our survey. Um, responses are in. Barbara will be working on preparing the plan basically next, um, and we'll meet with her. Forget the exact date. But we'll have, uh, have a plan for you guys to vote on at next meeting.
Great.
Um, yeah, I also included in the folder, I don't know if you want me to pop it up on, do you want me to pop up the, the survey summary?
I didn't actually see it, so yes, I'd love it.
Let's see what I can do.
Yeah, I have a PDF. Yeah, the responses were very, very impressive to have that many people. I was, I was, uh, that was, that was very good.
Yeah, it was. Good turnout. So, let's see. Alright. There we go, so. Yeah, I'm just going to run through it quickly then. Um, question one was whether they use the library or not. Three hundred and forty-three total responses, eighty-eight point six percent said yes, which is very good. To get that many no's. Uh, that was one of the groups that I was really interested in getting answers from. Um, and so ten percent of our responses coming from non-library users is uh, hopefully will be useful. In what town do you reside? Overwhelmingly Lunenburg, but we got a couple towns in, some Lemonsters, Fitchburgs, Lancaster, and some others. Age range predominantly thirty-five to forty-four, actually. Good number under eighteen, twenty percent, thirteen point seven percent, it looks like, actually. Not many eighteen to twenty-fours, as you might, might, might think. But pretty good distribution across the ages. Answers about why you think people use libraries. Lots of people think to check out materials. Some good other, get out of the house was another popular answer. Encourage children to read, another popular answer. Attending programs, finding a quiet place, using computers. All of the good. All of the good things we offer are important, it sounds like. Uh, so this is one of those questions that's kind of targeted at non-library users, um, asking what people use their free time for. Lots of watching TV, lots of outdoor recreation, lots of reading, spending time with friends. Some other things thrown in there, too. Be curious to see what the other answers included. Uh, I think all of these questions include, where appropriate, some chance for them to fill in others. Materials purchased for you or your family. Lots of books, lots of streaming services, and then not as many audiobooks, CDs, magazines, DVDs, or none. In your library, why don't people use the Lunenburg Public Library? Some people never ever use libraries, don't have the habit, everything is on the internet. Too busy, too little free time, the library is not open when they are available. Yeah, so a lot of the answers I would have expected, but the best part of our library, quiet spaces, book collection, reserve system, and the staff are top four answers. Although staff is number three, usually it's, it's one of the top answers, the very top. How satisfied are you with the collection? Pretty dominantly satisfied or very satisfied, so that's good. Ideas on what people would attend programs for. All sorts of different possibilities. Anything to learn a new skill, programs for children. Outdoor activities, hands-on crafts, some of the popular ones. Uh, how technology and the library fit into people's lives. Visit the library, visit CW Mars Libraries Reserve. Items, so. Technology definitely a part of their process, it seems like, which these days, not too surprising. Uh, then we had, I don't know if this is going to display in a useful way. We had a question about, yeah, it's hard to, with the summary, it's hard to see what this means, but um, we, we asked what hours uh, people would like to be able to visit the library. Um, and had our normal hours marked, asked them to check all that they would like to see, so. This, you know, bar chart display is not useful for us, but um, lots of, lots of answers, so I'll have to, oh, there you go, this summary looks better. Let's see, just glancing over it, evening hours, pretty high percentages. Seventy-plus percentage, people want to see evening hours, Monday through Thursday. Sixty-five percent Friday evening hours. Eighty-one percent Saturday morning, seventy-seven Saturday midday, fifty-three Sunday morning, fifty-seven midday on Sunday. Uh, so there's some, some, definitely some interest in Sunday hours, Friday hours. So that will be good information to include in the strategic plan, that there's some, some interest in that. We got a hundred and eighteen answers on what else would you like us to know, though it doesn't tell us what on the summary, so. Lots of cool stuff. Harry?
I hate to go back and beat a dead horse, but maybe as part of our closing for the carpet. And we've talked about um, trying to be open as much as we can before and after. Maybe we can stick in a Friday or, uh, I don't know, I'm not going to get, get, I don't know the implications of Sunday, but that might be a nice uh, thing to do for the community if, if we can do it.
Okay. I can see what we can do. One concern would be, you know, whether we have enough time to communicate it and for people to, to show up, but
Do I just?
No, I know. Certainly worth thinking about. We'll see if, see if we can maybe get people to volunteer to do that, certainly. Depending on which Friday it is, might be able to, so. Cool. Any other suggestions, ideas, comments?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Dick.
I, I just wanted to say that, you know, from, you know, working on the, working on the subcommittee and working with uh, with you, Mira, and, and Barbara to get that, that survey done, I think the, I think the number of responses is partially because of the design of the survey. And how it finally came together allowed people to feel comfortable without being pressured to go and go bang, 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 and answer. And I think that really for that sort of survey, that's, that's a, a pretty substantial number and a nice spread, so I think that's uh, you know, well done to you and, and to Barbara.
And the subcommittee. I, I agree, I think it's um, the response was as good as I could, as I hoped for. Uh, much, much better, actually. You know, and, and, you know, thanks to a couple of the other town departments for helping to spread the word, certainly the town manager, um, select board. School department helped us putting it in the newsletter. So I'm happy with it. Uh, Harry and I think Laura had a question.
Laura, go ahead.
Mira, are you able to separate out the responses from the non-users?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. I, that document is just like a summary document, um, so that within Survey Monkey, we've got a lot more control.
Okay.
I think the subcommittee has, has the login info and, and we can go in and look. Separately or together? In our folder, it should, it should be.
Yeah, I remember that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll go look.
Harry?
Um, did Barbara invoice us yet?
No. I'm, I'm trying to bug her, yeah. Yeah. I've got, I've got her P O waiting for her, just have to, have to get an invoice and
I, I think it's very important we get into this fiscal year.
Oh, it definitely will be, definitely will be. Yeah, I, I'm, I left her another message this afternoon, um, and I'm, I'm trying to get to talk, trying to talk to her. I think she must have just been out of the house uh, this afternoon.
Is she still on schedule that we had talked about for getting the, the, her draft to us?
As far as I know. I, I wouldn't expect any less from her, so.
Right. I'm just curious how she's going to um, how she's going to show those data with the, I, you know, I love my bar chart.
Uh, yeah, visualizations.
Yes.
We'll see what she pulls up. Alrighty, so I think it's uh, our trustee handbook discussion, alright. Want to pop up this chapter on your screen again. Uh, so chapter three this week, this month, uh, legal responsibilities, obviously. The name trustee has to do with, with your, your duty. You hold in trust for the public. Responsibility for the library. And that's really, really the core of, of what trustees do. Keep keep it safe um, for, for the public, uh, safe and, and, and in good health. Um, and I think we, we do the, do a lot of, again, like earlier chapters, this board has, has demonstrated. You know, you're on top of this stuff, but we'll, we'll go over it quickly here. You know, it is, you know, it's worth reiterating, you know, both the trust and fiduciary duty uh, of the, of the trustees. There may be legal consequences to not um, fulfilling those responsibilities. Uh, but that, I think we all know that. So um, so with legal responsibilities, a big part of it is understanding um, what the law actually states. Um, and the handbook includes a couple of sections um, and highlights a couple of other details, too. Sure you guys read that, so I won't reread it, uh, but both Massachusetts, you know, general law, um, and the town charter come into play when, when we're talking about how the library is legally established and the roles of the trustees are legally established. So Massachusetts general law has some, some general guidelines, but really for Lunenburg, our charter is also really important, and so in our our new member kit, um, there is some some highlight, I think I just took out the sections relevant to the library, um, and put it in that folder. Um, if you haven't reviewed it, it would be good to know that the charter was recently revised. Um, so, and it does do uh, the things. Uh, we had, you know, the board itself, um, and Bob Ebersole did the library justice, um, by making sure that the charter revisions did include you know, the proper delineation, proper, the suggestion, suggested delineations of responsibility. Particularly when it comes to appointing the library director. And so the revision does include that the trustees are responsible for uh, hiring the library director and overseeing them. So that is positive. Um, just, uh, so here's the charter section, just scrolling through here and seeing uh, Harry's favorite here as well, open meeting law, uh, another piece of law that we're responsible for following, understanding and obeying. Got to make sure access um, for the public is available to uh, meetings. The other big law that's, that's important is the conflict of interest law, um, which you guys get a summary of every year. And every other year need to complete the mandatory online training, um, which I'm sure you guys are up to date on, Elaine and the rest of the town hall crew, stay on top of that. And then there's always the liability, um, you know, town's pretty well insured, so if we have any questions about that, we can always reach out and, and figure out, um, if we have cover as we, coverage as we have in the past, apparently, remember Harry had a question. And we got that answered, thanks to Michael Ray. And I don't know if you guys had any questions about this, I, I think this chapter is pretty straightforward. I would, if you haven't looked at it lately, though, I would also suggest you look at the charter beyond just the Massachusetts general laws that are highlighted here in this chapter, too, that the town charter is, is also important, um, from that standpoint. That was nice and quick. Any comments or questions? Alright. I think that means trust fund update, which is me, too. Um, so it's not a huge update, but we do have we do have a, a bill number that, so we can check in on the status of that. I sent it to Harry. And I didn't write it down for this meeting, but we do have it. Uh, let me just pull it up here.
I'm going to give you the number, Mira.
You have it right there?
I do.
I think I have it right here, too.
Uh, so there's, uh, this number showing thirty-nine, two, fifty-seven, sixty.
Harry also has a statement from Touchstone Investments on our current tally, so that's doing pretty well. Um, the, I've got the bill number here, House Bill three, seven, two, seven, um, is the one that includes our 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 home rule petition uh, for the library trust funds. Um, so we can check in on that. I've got a link there, too, so we'll stay up to date on checking on that. And I think you guys can see that, so. There.
Do you know where, do you know where that bill is? Like where, where it is in the process?
Uh, it's been assigned a committee. Um, it's been assigned to the municipalities and regional government committees, so I'll click the link here and just double-check and see, I don't think it's probably progressed beyond discussing in a committee. Mr. Cena of Acton, a petition. It's just been referred referred to the committee. It's just been referred to the committee, so um, there, they'll be discussing it. And eventually they'll I think uh, move it to the floor, but I don't know about the timing on that.
Do you think it'll be during this session, though?
That, that would be nice, I, I, but I don't know, I it's been about a year since um, almost a year since, since we voted and, and so it got sent along, uh, which was in the initial estimate, but obviously, it's been a year of totally abnormal um, things, so.
It'd be worth um, some phone calls to the rep to encourage somebody on that committee to encourage it to be heard this session. So.
Michael Ray.
Yeah, I'm a step ahead of you on that one, so. So I've already reached out to Representative uh, Kishmeri, he and I talked about two weeks ago, just on him picking this up. Um, you know, Representative Cena represents about three-quarters of our town, but quite honestly, in the last year, I have yet to be able to get him to return a phone call, uh, email, anything. But Mr. Kishmeri, on the other hand, is, is extremely responsive um, to all contact and communications, as is Senator Cronin. So I also talked to Senator Cronin's office about this, uh, and he and I will be seeing each other on Memorial Day, and I'll make sure I bring it up to him again. So I, I will hope that we can get this thing through, uh, but it does kind of it doesn't help us that we have a representative that's not responsive.
Thanks for that, Michael Ray.
Thank, thank, thank you for that information, and it's certainly uh, yeah. Could be nice to have a rep from Lunenburg, if anybody who's civic-minded was interested in doing that, Michael Ray.
No ambitions for any higher office, zero. No ambitions for any higher office, zero.
Alright. Uh, I'm just pulling back to the agenda here and. Yeah, I don't know if you guys, uh, not, not too much, um, there's some more discussion about the potential fundraiser with the skate park group. The pop-up book sale's been going really well, I think, uh, close to twenty-five hundred dollars raised by the friends, through that book sale in donations, um, which in, um, for perspective, the last fall book sale we had, uh, which included a bake sale and, and was a year and a half ago, more than that now, raised about twenty-five hundred dollars, and so the bake sale typically brings seven or eight hundred. So the fall, not fall book sale, the book sale part of it, um, has been eclipsed by the pop-up book sale already, which is great. They're getting ready for their annual meeting as well. In July.
Yeah, I might just give the miniature golf, uh, update.
Yeah, that, so they, they're putting that on hold until at least the fall. The board of the friends is, is, is pretty busy, um, not just with friends duties. And so they did not feel like they could move forward uh, with planning and participating in planning right now, um, and so, they have a lot, they had a lot of questions about, kind of unresolved questions about, how it, how it would, would be working, um, distribution of, of labor between the two groups. And it, it just seemed like something to, postpone opening up, um, until a little bit later. So they're thinking at the earliest sometime in the winter would be, would be when the fundraiser itself would be held and, and thinking about starting to do planning in the fall on it. Anthony, uh, who's the, kind of the adult contact for the skate park group, suggested from his experiences that it takes a good eight to, to ten months of work with sponsors, um, but, that was, that was not enough to, uh, get the friends to start, start on it now. They're really, you know, Sue is, 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 is typically secretary and she's not been able to do secretary duties because of her work. You know, the attendance over Zoom has kind of gone down for the executive board of the friends. It's, it just doesn't feel the same on Zoom, as you guys know, um, and so, Anne has been teaching, I think, a lot, um, so she's had a lot less time, um, so, you know, those, Jean, Jean's busy at work as well, so, you know, a lot of those, a, a lot of those, um, figureheads, are not, are not able to spend as much time on friends duties, so that's, that's been a big part of, of, of their.
The, uh, the board should know as well that Jean is about to get much busier come the fall.
Right.
Multiple grandchildren being born, so her, her time, you know, between work and, uh, grandchildren is, you know, they're gonna, they're going from zero to three in a matter of a few months, so. Gonna be an interesting time for her, and, and she certainly is one of the, has been one of the driving forces, uh, you know, in the library on, on, on this board, as well as on the friends, so, uh, it's just, it's difficult juggling because especially with the friends, there seem to be fewer and fewer robins out there that are willing to, uh, to come into the nest, so to speak.
Yeah. I don't know if I've left anything out, um, but I think that, that, that was good part of the discussion.
Talk about the miniature golf project.
Yep, that's the fundraiser for the skate park group, so they're kind of putting it on hold.
Okay. Which has basically been tabled for now, right?
Yeah, it's been tabled, yeah, until at least the fall for them.
Okay. So, uh, next item, yours is find free discussion.
Yes. So I put together document for you guys with some numbers. So, over the last few fiscal years, I've got the revenue generated from fines. So this would include overdue fines, um, lost item replacement charges. So you can see this year obviously is very, a strange year. Three hundred and fifty dollars basically in fines so far, so we've been, we've had large portions where we've been checking things in in amnesty mode, which doesn't generate fines. You know, a lot, obviously a lot less, uh, use of the library. Lot fewer circulations, um, than normal. Uh, so all kind of all of that rolls into that. Last year also had, you know, a good portion of it was part, was during the pandemic. So with the closure there, that certainly would have impacted the final number, but even then, you know, the numbers were definitely down. And then over the, the four years before that, you know, certainly there's a downward trend, uh, fifty-six hundred dollars in fines in two thousand nineteen. Fifty-eight in two thousand eighteen, fifty-eight almost in two thousand six, seventeen, two thousand sixteen was almost seven thousand. And certainly the further back you go, the higher, uh, that number. Um, so, you know, part of that is, you know, a little bit less usage of the library over the years. Think probably, um, some of the other things that we talk about when we talk about fine free, um, fines being an obstacle maybe come into play. And I also had, uh, we, we did some reports, um, with the help of CW Mars on, some proportions of checkouts returned, uh, total circulations, items never returned, and then items returned late, um, so we got, we can get an idea from this. Probably would be a few in the returned late that might have been, charged as lost, but, uh, when they return, then people don't have to pay the replacement fee. So, return late column, uh, which is all the way on the right, uh, would include, would, would be overdue items, there'd not be items, um, lost, the never return would be lost. So overdue fines would come from things returned late. Lost charges would come from never returned.
So.
Yeah, question.
So I'm reading this, that two thousand seventy-four items have not been returned?
Yeah, from, so during FY twenty-one, which is our current year. Never returned items is two thousand, so that would include current checkouts.
Just things that are overdue, okay. Extremely, or maybe extremely overdue.
The, I, I think it would include anything that was, that's checked out and not returned, so it'd include items that were checked out two days ago.
Okay.
Few days before the report was run.
That's why, alright.
So it's, it's significantly higher than it would be otherwise, I would anticipate many of those items will be returned.
Okay.
So that, that might be a data point to throw out, in looking at this one.
And just one other thing, when you're reading revolving fund numbers from, uh, twenty-one to sixteen, one thing that I recall, I might be wrong, was the very system doing the automatic renewals for people.
That might be a huge part of that FY twenty.
Nice thing.
Yep.
Prior to that, it would be, have been people calling, and they finally realized they could call for phone call renewals.
Yep.
All those things helped.
Definitely. Yeah, so, you know, two hundred items in FY twenty, and that never returned. Column that's out of sixty thousand circulations, um, it's pretty low. But three thousand eight hundred is, um, you know, much higher proportion, so that over, you know, overdue items is definitely a significant number, um, but looking at that difference between FY twenty and FY nineteen, that is exactly what Kate was just referring to, I think. We have this automatic renewal implemented in the cataloging system that after your first checkout period automatically renews items to give you additional time without starting overdue fines charging, so. You know, I think that difference, um, between FY nineteen and FY twenty gives us a good, frame of reference for, for talking about going fine free. So the other batch of data, I don't know, is this too small for you guys? Can you see this third group of?
A little small.
It's a little small, let me see what I can do to zoom.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so this is, these are amounts for only overdue fines for different, um, different age groups. So by fiscal year, I think that this third one is actually FY twenty-one. But you can see, I would say to four thousand dollars paid in overdue fines in FY nineteen by adult patrons. Six hundred almost still owed on overdue fines. Senior citizens, eight hundred and thirty paid in FY nineteen, one hundred and fifteen still owed on overdue fines. Two seventeen and two seventy for young adults. And FY twenty, fourteen hundred paid, four hundred and ninety still owed for adults, two hundred eighty-eight and forty-four for senior citizens, one twenty-one and one ninety-one for young adult. So I mean, for here, I think for this, this data, the most interesting thing that I see is the much higher balance owed for young adults over the balance paid for that age group. The other, the other groups are far, far balanced in the other direction. So this goes back to, to our discussion that we were having, when we were talking about removing fines for children's materials, uh, which is children and, and young people have a much, uh, much harder time paying fines, they don't have, they don't have, you know, income, they've got maybe their allowance, uh, but they're dependent on adults for whatever money they have that could go towards this. So, you know, we see many more, uh, young people not paying their fines than, uh, paying them, um, and so that becomes an obstacle for them to, for, for using the library. Eventually, they're gonna accumulate enough fines that they'll be blocked from using the library. Ten dollars in fines is, is suspends the account, so. You know, I think proportionally, I'm surprised that there's, as, as, that this balance owed for these older groups is as high as it is. It, it's not, doesn't seem that significant, but, you know, that there are that many overdue fines charged, but not paid still is, is more than I expected. So.
Muir.
Yes, yeah.
On, on young adult, is that an age or is that a book category? I'm assuming that's age, because you also have senior citizen.
It's an age, so, uh, within CW Mars, uh, if birthdate or age data is entered for a patron, there's kind of an automatic categorization within, within a category, and they call it young adult.
So what age does that go to?
Uh, eighteen.
Eighteen, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, um, I think it's twelve to eighteen.
Is there a juvenile?
There is. I believe it didn't get into this data because we don't have. I don't know actually why it's not in this data. We, yeah, good question, I was thinking about that, but did not circle back to get that data.
I'm curious, one other thing, when you said about the adults, I'm wondering if that high number reflects books not fines, because that always adds up a lot, you know, a book might be fifty bucks or sixty bucks even.
So this last group of data is just overdue fines. Include.
Any material.
Include replacement charges. So.
That is kind of surprising.
So proportionally, you know, for FY nineteen, overdue fines, we can do a little math here, yeah. Call this, four, four thousand six hundred dollars for overdue fines total. A thousand dollars, so fifty-six total in, in fines came in paid, I guess. I guess we can't really do fully. So four thousand twenty, twenty-one of those, those dollars would have been from overdue fines. So, you know, like sixteen hundred dollars paid to replace books in FY nineteen. So when we talk about fine free, we're talking about removing overdue fines and not the replacement charges typically. That's what I would suggest, we, we, we consider if we're gonna consider it. So if someone did lose a book or damage it, um, they would still be responsible for paying for the replacement fee. Still, even though we're fine free, um, Harry's got a question, it looks like.
I, I did, your, can you scroll up, I get, yeah, that direction.
Yep, that's the top, the other revenue, this way.
Keep going, no, keep going lower.
Lower.
Yeah.
Sorry, oh, scroll up, I, sorry, I misunderstood.
So my question is, uh, like in fiscal year nineteen, it was that, uh, ending balance, if you will, of five hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Sure, for adults, yep.
Did that become part of the, uh, fiscal year twenty, uh, monies? Or is that five eighty-eight now past due for two years?
Past due for two years. So that's, that likely, that's, you, you know, either, um, fines that were small enough that they didn't really impact a person's use of the library. You, everybody, once in a while, kind of accumulates thirty cents here and there. Um, so it could be, you know, a good number of, of small things like that, or it could be people who are not using the library anymore. Because those fines are high enough that their, their accounts are suspended, sorry to interrupt.
And, and does the library follow up on these past due balances? To, like, I don't know, uh, some kind of a notice to people saying, hey, you still owe us from two years ago or not?
Um, at a certain point, no. Within a fairly short period of time, they get a good number of notices. Up, up to three, really, if it's lost, they probably have three paper notices that have been mailed to them over the course of, you know, the first six months after an item is lost. And some, I guess, these are, these are overdue fines too, so, um, depending on the amount for overdue fines, uh, sometimes it's really small, ten, thirty cents, seventy-five cents, a dollar. If they're still using the library, they can, they get a kind of a reminder, um, usually the staff, uh, will let them know that they've got some fines on their account. And so typically, um, the other thing, if it's an over, just an overdue fine, it's not something that went into lost status. It's not been so long overdue and never returned, um, that it's been charged as lost. If, if, if that happens, um, there isn't a lot of need or. If, if, if that happens, there isn't a lot of need or you benefit to reminding people about that, you know. Harry, if you, you, you may, you may have thirty cents on your account, but I think if we called you up and said, hey, where's our thirty cents? You, you wouldn't be happy about it, so.
Or if I got
That type of thing.
We're spending a dollar to, to send out a letter for that thirty cent, I wouldn't be happy. So, Muir, I'm sorry, thanks. So I know that this is a discussion, but what you're doing is you're, you're presenting us with the facts and I, and I appreciate that, but is there a recommendation?
Well, I, you know, I think I, I still feel the same way that I did when we, we had the discussion last year, which you know, I think in general, in the library world is, is moving in the direction of, of removing fines, overdue fines. You know, the, our having this discussion was prompted by, you know, the Boston Public Library announcing that, that they were going in that direction. And our, our, our discussion last year was prompted by the Boston Public Library removing fines from their, their children's material. But I think, you know, even, even trickling down to smaller libraries, this is definitely the direction things are going. Knowing that fines are an obstacle to access and that they disproportionately affect those least able to, to overcome and to pay is another, you know, part of that consideration, I think. I, so I, you know, I still think going in the direction of fine free is, is probably beneficial for, for many reasons. Part of the reason we're discussing it, I think, is that we, we went into the, the this period of, of trying out children's materials being fine free with hopes of evaluating after a certain period. And we haven't really been able to gather good data to evaluate at this stage. And so there was, from my point of view, the question of whether you wanted, you, you, the trustees were, would be interested in either proceeding without that evaluation part. Or if you wanted to continue to gather data before we stepped further down the progression of, of fine free. I think either way, you're going to have positive, positive effects and, and a, a way to bring good good, good results about. But I, I am curious, you know, what the feeling is, if there's if there's interest in, in kind of progressing or not. Does that answer the question, Perry?
It does. I, I, I think I'm looking for the equivalent of, and, and I don't know if this is the right way, way to mention it, but I'm looking for sort of a motion from you that you suggest that we do something.
I see. Yeah, I mean, i- if you, if
I have something that.
Sure, please. Go ahead, was it Donna?
This is Donna, yeah, this is Donna. I'm just looking at it from another point of view, having raised a couple of kids, is that one of the big things that I saw change in when my kids were growing up was not having consequences for their actions and being let off the hook per se. You build a sense of responsibility in a child that will then transfer to them becoming an adult. And then they'll become a senior citizen. If you look simply at this list and look at the fact that senior citizens pay their bills, they get there in steps. And while I'm, I hear what you're saying and I see that other side of it, I also feel that this is part of the equation as well.
Can I make a comment? If you're done, Donna?
Yeah, I'm done.
New York, you see Kate wants to say something?
Oh, yeah, please, Kate.
I don't want to cut in, uh, kind of tagging on to that. I hear what you're saying and I agree with that component. I just was thinking of a couple of things that had been mentioned before. If, for people who have difficulty coming, for people who have any kind of hardship, for people who get charged for things like the old days for videos that nobody even wanted and it was a dollar a day and things like that, they just were so out of whack. It seemed horrible to ever charge a fine. It seemed wrong. I agree with what you're saying that it can, I guess, taking myself, I really, really need a nudge. I, I would say flat out laziness. I think my stuff should be back. It's two weeks or whatever, it can be renewed, that is a long enough time. And then I found that during this period, I wouldn't get to the Dropbox sometimes just out of sheerly not doing it. I mean, I, I just didn't do it. And it, it was just like, what is wrong with me? I do sometimes need a nudge deadline. So I like, I like the idea that there's a timeliness to getting materials back because it is for the public to use them. So I, I guess I am completely on both sides. I think that we shouldn't have fines for many people and I think for other people, it's kind of nice to have fines. So I don't know. I guess that means I would go any, either way, whatever the board says, I, I, I would be voting unanimously with the board. Bad comment.
Nothing like sitting on the fence.
I mean, nothing in my life is, you know, it's always gray. I live in a gray world.
Can I jump in on this?
Go ahead, Maya.
All right, so while, I mean, I just had a couple of thoughts. I mean, you know, if we look at this from a purely business perspective, as trustees of the library doing business, if we are an outlier, charging fines when other libraries, Boston Library, other businesses that are available to people are not charging fines, then we are excluding the very population that we want to encourage to come to the library, which is millennials and younger patrons. And then the other thing is, as much as I agree that it teaches responsibility, I I have two kids and it's my responsibility to teach them responsibility. I don't expect you and your fine system to do it for me. In a way, that's kind of the way things are moving in, in the library world where I, I just, I, I don't want to be, you know, we want to try to be a progressive librarian. If we're holding on to the ideas of fines, then we're not being progressive. You know, that's, those are just some of the thoughts I had.
I have something to, Muir.
Yeah, Laura.
If you have any response that you want to do, I'll wait.
I know, but yeah, go ahead. I, I'll talk eventually.
You probably can't quantify this, but do you know how much time and money goes into collecting these fines?
I'm not sure that I could quantify it. Certainly, you know, you have there would be a, a portion of any interaction at the staff desk, sorry, the circulation desk. If someone has fines, you're saying here, did you know you have this many, you owe us this many cents? And, you know, the patron, often the response is, oh, no, I didn't know that. What is it for? And so then it, you know, from a few seconds, it turns into digging in and, and investigating where, where the fines actually originated and, oh no, I brought that back on time. So, you know, it's certain times it can, can really snowball. You know, the other staff, the amount of staff time that goes into it would be billing. And billing typically happens with just the lost item. So that's, that's a portion that's kind of related that would not be would not be part of going fine free, that would, that would stick around. So it's not it's not a huge portion, but it's, it's significant. It's not tough to quantify for sure, though.
How, how large of a fine would someone accrue before you shut them off?
Ten dollars is the, the, the amount. Either one lost item or ten dollars in total fines and fees. So that could, you know, five, five days late on one DVD would be five dollars. Two weeks late on one book would be, do, 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 you know, ten cents a day, times, times twenty.
Two bucks.
No, yeah, so it'd, it'd be, you know, much less than that. So, you know, it, it often it, it's a, it happens over a long period of time and, and many, many books that were a day late or two days late or three days late.
You're a dick here?
Yes, Dick.
Two things, number, number one, as far as, as far as young people's responsibility, we're talking really about parental responsibility. Because most of these young adults don't have independent income. You have an allowance as independent income or whatever. And the parents are the ones that ultimately know that this may or may not be due and need to be encouraging or taking up the cause of getting the book back. So, you know, kids will bring something home, but the parents need to be aware and into that. And the other thing that we talked about in one of the original things was if we go fine free, having some sort of a box or container or jar, whatever, that says if you're feeling guilty about bringing a book back late, feel free to put some money in the jar. You know, and there was some discussion at one point that there were libraries actually that were making more money that way than they had on the fines. And, and again, it's, it's a matter of, I don't know if it's a matter of social responsibility or as Maya was saying, it, it seems to be the way that libraries across the country are going and we can be, you know, a leader rather than a follower.
Follow up to what both you and Maya said, thank you very much. And you kind of answered my dilemma or question. So having, I love on the printout, when you get books, when it would tell you how much money you just checked out in books. So maybe my problem with wanting people to bring things back on time, maybe it isn't the fine at all, maybe it's just getting that notice. Did, you know, did you realize you've had these things out now for six weeks? Love to get them back. So, yeah, you know, maybe both of those, those things you said are correct, all those things.
I don't, I, I guess I should qualify it as an anecdote, but I, I believe, a bit, so a huge part of this would be the PR. And I see Bob has his hand raised, so I'll, I'm gonna go to Bob in just a second, but you know, and the PR would include that a reminder that these, these items that you're borrowing are for, you know, the public to use. And so other people are likely waiting for them. And the PR would also include whatever details are relevant, including, you know, the guilt can or the, the conscience jar that is available if you feel guilty because you were late, but you, we didn't charge you fines and you're able to pay, you can deposit your donation in that jar. So, and, and typically, what the, the stories that come out of libraries who are trying this, the stories include that they tend to raise more money through that donation process than they would through their old fine process. Additionally, the goodwill that's generated from staff not needing to remind people about fines and from the, the, kind of the generosity or the feeling of generosity that would be included in that, the, the gesture of going fine free, removing the punitive nature of, 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 of charging people money does very similar things in, in creating goodwill. Bob?
Yeah, thank you, Muir. I, I agree with what the other, what you guys have been saying about parental responsibility. I mean, I was the same way with my kids. I was, we were really careful about keeping track of their library stuff. And when you were first going over these numbers, what I see, see in these numbers is, is people being denied access to the library. And that kind of really bothers me. And, and I think that it, you might be like, more likely to get stuff back if, if people know they're not going to get fined for it, because I think sometimes people avoid going to the library because they know that they owe, you know, a six dollar fine or a ten dollar fine, whatever it is.
Yeah. I, I, that, that echoes the experiences that I've had, you know, on the, on the frontline. And people, actually, Robin, Robin Venetia, I was talking with yesterday or this morning at the library, she has a neighbor who apparently, I don't, I don't remember this, but apparently had her dog damaged a book. And she brought it in and, and I was so kind and generous to her in dealing with and not making her feel more guilty about that, that it made a huge impression on, on this person. And so that's the, that's kind of the, an example of, of how goodwill gets generated. She, I believe she still paid to replace the book, but in handling it in a way that, that, you know, shared generosity, the, the positive feelings that resulted created additional use of the library. And I think, you, my belief is that it, whatever community you're in, these types of gestures where you're opening things up, you're enabling, you know, the people you most want to be helping to come in and be able to use the library, even when they make mistakes, you treat them like human beings. They're going to love the library and they're going to support the library. And when you ask them for help, they're going to be ready to give you help. So, you know, I don't, I don't know necessarily that we need to rush down, you know, the fine free path. But if that's something you guys believe in, I certainly believe in it. And, and we could, we could progress, you know, however quickly we feel like is appropriate, so. Laura?
What do you do with the money from the fines? What do you use it for?
So the fines go into the revolving fund, which means we deposit them up at town hall. And then they come back to the library. Typically, what I use them for magazine subscriptions, sometimes database subscriptions. They come back to the library and we use them for library materials, really.
So is this money like over and above your budget?
Depends how you, how you explain it. Technically, yes. Yeah, so it, the, the revolving fund is not calculated in our operations budget. It's not, because, because it's not really an appropriated an amount appropriated to us. So it is typically additional beyond that operational, you know, funding.
You don't rely on the money for anything, really, then?
No, this year we didn't have it. You know, we've had three hundred and fifty dollars in fines. And so I've had to use other money for those things that we would typically use the revolving fund for. So we've had a good dry run if we wanted to try going fine free, because basically we've, we've been fine free this year. So we've had a good dry run, if we wanted to try, go and find free, because basically, we've, we've been fine free this year.
Harry?
Harry's good as.
Yeah, I can't see you, Harry, sorry.
Okay, sorry, so, two things, uh, cause I, I'd like to try to move this along, just as, as sort of the meeting moderator, but. Um, Nor, in the same, I mean, and I remember that we talked about this a zillion years ago. Uh, and I think you used the goodwill example of the dog, uh, damaged book. But, so I, I think it's really a great opportunity for you to create, great will. With a patron by handling it well. It, on the other side of that, if that person didn't happen to find you at the desk and found grumpy Harry at the desk that evening. Then my arbitrary, uh, arbit-. The ability to be a little bit arbitrary may also not be a positive experience. So it goes both ways in, in having the discretion. At the desk level, and I think that I may be asked once before, if I had a fine and you wanted to waive it, could you do it? At that time or at the desk, and I think the answer was yes.
Yeah, there is some discretion, yep, available.
So, uh, what, what I would just like to see. We've done exactly what the agenda said, which is that we kind of find free discussion, but I'd like to have the board. On, together with you, uh, just decide whether we want to, I mean, I, I kind of feel like. We're missing the action item here, other than the discussion. Do, do people want to have an action item and, and? What is that action item, and should we be voting on that, or do we want to table it for a, a? Discussion later on, although I don't think that the information that we're gonna get is gonna be any different than the information we have now. So, I, I, I'm just, I'm trying to, uh, come to a, some sort of a. Conclusion or not conclusion with the consensus of the group on this. So.
Yeah, I, I would, uh, I think we can move this along, I make a motion. That the board approve Lunenburg Live, Public Library going totally fine free as of the start of the next fiscal year, July one.
Okay.
My second thought.
So, so now we, we can have discussion about that and, and a vote on that.
I, I. Go ahead, Donna.
Um, uh, while I was listening for the last couple of minutes, I did. Google on my phone what's, you know, the fine free libraries in Massachusetts, there are quite a few more than I thought there were. So that was interesting, what also, uh, popped up, cause I just Googled, uh. Fine free libraries pros and cons, and I didn't get, of course, we're in a meeting, so I didn't read it. Uh, but I'm going to afterwards. So. Just thought I'd throw that out there, that there's some good information on the internet right now in Massachusetts on fine free libraries.
And, and within CW Mars too, the generally, the, the number is going up quite a bit, the last couple. Users Council meetings, there's been, um. I guess over the last year, really, uh, there's been a lot of discussion, um, at Users Council of, of. Whether it would be appropriate to, to try and go more network wide. And obviously, that's not, that's not what's happened. It's, it's really an individual library decision, but, uh, the trend certainly is, is. More and more fine free. And, and within CW Mars, that's remarkable because it's mostly small libraries, which, which is, you know, kind of the hardest argument to make for, for small libraries where. Fine, fine money does, you know, pay, it be, is a higher proportion of the, the funding available to them, so. For what that's worth.
Go ahead, Kate. Um, just also, I think the timing that Dick has suggested is perfect for. Um, after the rugs and Muir just getting us off to a great start in the new year, so could be terrific timing to do it.
I think, uh, Muir, you made a very good point also about this past year with the pandemic being basically fine free.
We get to see what it's like before we even get to do it. Uh-oh, cattail.
So Muir.
Yes, Laura.
If I take out a book that is really from another library and I bring it back late to you. Do you get fined for me being late or from the other library? How does that work?
It's a great question, that's an, it's an interesting dynamic, so. Let's say, it's you doing it, so you're a Lunenburg resident, you're, you're coming to Lunenburg Library. Borrowing a book that's been sent to Lunenburg from another library, it's owned by that other library, and then you return it late. So, uh, the policies of that owning library would apply. Um, so we wouldn't be able to forgive even Lunenburg residents. Um, fines that are accumulated for items we don't own. So, that would mean, you would have, you would have to pay however many dimes you were, you were fined. You know, three days late, three dimes, um, thirty cents, if you paid that. In Lunenburg. Uh, that would go to us. If you went to Lemonster and you paid, that would go to Lemonster. Um, so it's that, like, there's a, a little bit of a disconnect there. Where. And, and a little bit of a, um, a sticky point, too. So, uh, a good example as to where it sticks, uh, senior citizens in Lemonster don't get charged fines, um, and. If you go there, they've sometimes forgive your fines. So there've been, there've been a, a couple times in the past, and I can't think of a recent timing, um, where. You know, people would bring items back late over there and instead of. You know, accumulating fines in the way that it should be working, um, they yet, they were kind of circumventing the system, but. I think that, that, that's kind of a digression, so I'm sorry about that, off topic. Off on the side topic, um. Where were we? I'm sorry, I totally, I derailed myself there, Laura.
So if I took a book out from Lunenburg that was sent there by Lemonster, I would still owe a fine?
Yes.
If you got rid of fines, and would you keep that thirty cents, or would you have to send it to Lemonster?
We wouldn't have to send it to Lemonster. If there, if there's a, so for overdue fines. Those can, those basically, because of our agreements within the network, they can stay at the library where they're paid. Replacement fees are different, so if you lost that book, instead of just returning, returning it late. Then, if you paid in Lemon, uh, in Lunenburg, we would have to send that to Lemonster. And in fact, we would not, we would try to not take that check from you, we would say, if you're paying for a book that you've lost. You really should be paying directly to the owning library. Does that answer it? Okay.
I think so.
And, and typically, that's, sorry, Michael Ray, typically, that's be, because the overdue fines, we can keep them because they're so small, it's, you know, ten, twenty cents at a time. Michael Ray, sorry to interrupt.
How long does it take to determine that an item is lost?
Um, usually it's about, uh, it, it gets charged, uh, charged, changed to lost status about three weeks after its due date. Uh, it's not typically billed for four weeks, I think. So one, uh, one. One, um, kind of me, middle of the road option. Um, for going fine free that I've heard of is. Charging a processing fee when something gets changed to lost status. Um, so it'd be, I, and I don't know that, that this really appeals, but, you know, because of Michael Ray's question. It prompts me to, to talk about it. So when some fine free libraries, if someone keeps a book until it's lost and then returns it. Typically, they would no longer have to pay the replacement fee, and if they didn't have overdue fines, that means. Basically, there's no financial consequence, which is fine for a lot of places and, and certain places. As an alternative, uh, uh, include in. That replacement fee, when it gets charged, a processing fee, which is not forgivable. So if they return a book late after it was charged as lost, they would still owe two dollars, say. Just for, for your interest, I don't know.
Oh, how often, in your experience, is that the case, Muir?
Um. I, I did not sure how to quantify it, it ha- it definitely happens, and it's not so rare that, you know, like, it. It's, it's not a huge number of times, but it's.
So twenty, thirty a year? Is it even that much?
Yeah, I think, I think probably, that seems like, uh, it, it could be more than that.
So sixty, seventy, under a hundred dollars?
Yeah. Just, just, yeah, not a, right, 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 yeah, not huge.
Just in perspective, it's not, it's unlikely, if that person has gone that long. The two dollars is unlikely to be, you know, is that a, but, you know, don't do this again, you know, it's gonna cost you two bucks.
Yeah, I agree, I, from my perspective, I just, I. I always struggle to not include things that I find interesting in a discussion, I think, for me, I, there's no appeal to it, it's just an interesting thing. I agree, it's, you know, what's much more important from my perspective would be the PR, the, the work upfront in. Communicating why we're doing it, how people can, you know, interact with the, the program or the, the, um. You know, the initiative in a beneficial way for everyone, mutually beneficial, you know, um. How they can continue to benefit the community by using the library, et cetera. So you're talking about it upfront makes a, a much bigger difference than, you know, that tiny, tiny little thing, yeah.
I feel like we just have a, a good opportunity here, because, I mean, even though the carpet situation isn't ideal. You know, we have an opportunity to come back after it with changes made and to play those changes up. As a positive change for the community, um, because there is a, an, you know, a natural stop and start point, so. When Dick, you know, he moved that we do it as of July first, that's, that would, that would be that natural. Kind of point where we can, can use that whole series of PR about the carpet thing, right? And add this on to it and make it exciting that the library's reopening, rather than it kind of getting lost in the shuffle. If we're gonna do it.
Um, just trying to keep, uh, sort of form to this, are there other comments to Dick's motion? Discussion, comments, anything?
Mr., uh, Mr. Michael Ray down there in the corner. That's up to, you're, that's where you are on my screen, Mike.
Yeah, you're, you're right in the middle of mine, um. Hey, my only, my only question is, there was talk about, uh, voluntary fine system. Um, and the motion doesn't make reference to that, is that the intention to have a voluntary fine system?
I would suggest having that option available, um. The way that other libraries have done that is to have that voluntary system, a donation to the friends of the library.
I, I don't think, uh, I don't. That, that, I don't think has to be board policy. Uh, as far as part of the motion, I think that can just be. That, I don't know what the board feels, whether that's something that, that should be in the motion.
What if we add something like, with, uh, a voluntary, um, fine structure at the, at the, um. Thank you, yes, discretion, that was the word I was groping for, discretion of the director.
I act, I actually think personally, that if we just keep the motion to the fine free July one. And then we can take up that other thing even next month, as a separate thing, rather than complicating. The basic motion. And just have it, this is, this is it, and then we can just, we can discuss, or we can have a, a subsidiary motion, even at the next meeting to, you know, implement a. You know, guilt jar or whatever we want to call it. But just go with this as, as a straight, we're going fine free July one, period, bang.
Is there any chance that if we don't add that to the motion, that we can't do it later, Michael?
Absolutely.
Yay, there you go.
Okay, so I think I'd like to ask for a vote at this point to Dick's motion, which is. As of new fiscal year to have Lunenburg Library go fine free, correct it, that's, that's it, right?
Lunenburg Library would go fine free, totally fine free as of July one, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so, w- with, with that motion, um, I'd like to ask for a roll call vote, Laura.
You're muted, Laura.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Harry? I'm going along with the. So, okay, unanimously approved, thank you, Dick. And, uh, thank you for everyone participating in this discussion, I, I, I'm gonna make sure that we do have an agenda item. About the, um, voluntary, uh, fine, um. Uh, on next, on the next meeting, okay? All right, so, uh, I think we have already covered update on future meetings, we know that the next meeting. Will be in person, the venue of such meeting will be, uh, uh, advised by Muir as time gets closer, correct? Um, I, I still think that, uh, I'd like to suggest that if there are members that. For some reason don't feel comfortable in, um, being in person, that we still have the Zoom option, Michael Ray, is that? Okay?
I bu- I believe that the Ritter Building does have a, a Wi-Fi network, but.
Ac- actually, I, I, I just, I can answer my own question, because for many, many, many meetings I attended remotely. Yeah. So I think that, uh, I don't know if it's just for us or in general, uh, it is okay to do it. Um. Okay, so any other board comments?
Just, just happy to be a member of the board.
Likewise. Uh, any other board comments?
Not a member of the board, but I want to congratulate the members who were recently, uh, voted in. Uh, and especially to Laura for your full first official full term, so congratulations.
Thank, thank you.
Um, and I would, go ahead, I'm sorry, Dick.
By, by the way, I went to the town website and tried to access. The election results, and it was a link, and it went nowhere, so, I was, I was curious as to what the, uh. How it was for, for our library.
I actually printed it out.
They fixed that link today, I think.
Okay. I was gonna ask for recount, actually. On an Arizona, they could come to Lunenburg.
Dick, if you want to send that to, after the meeting, cause I, I, I.
I'll check out the link now that it's fixed, but.
Okay, it's a, it's a PDF, um, within the town court election results.
Those new voting machines. Those new voting machines.
So I have my quick comment. Thank you, everyone, for your endorsement. I appreciate it. And Bob, thank you for taking on your, I don't know, your, your selfless task of these 10 minutes.
Oh, you're welcome.
I kind of think we should have pushed it off on Kate, but.
If you're sick, let me know.
Okay, so at, what is it? Midnight? No. At, at 9:16 PM, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Back in.
All right, we have to do a damn roll call. Laura?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Harry.
Harry's frozen.
Maya?
Yes.
Michael Ray? Thank you all.
Thank you guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody.